Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. The time is now seven P M. And the date is February twenty first, twenty twenty two. Before we call this meeting to order, I'd like to ask the Pastor One Mission Church Pastor Antonio Wimberly to come gracious with prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another day. We thank you for our leaders that we have of our great city. We pray that this meeting will be a great meeting tonight. Everything will be done decent and in order, Father God. We love you and we thank you so much for this time. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All rise for pledge allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Thompson Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Watley. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
All right, awesome. Yeah, right. Moving right along. Approval of the agenda? Ma'am?
Yeah. Who gets started? We were given several different agendas, at least I was in my mailbox. And then with the past meetings. And I didn't see all of them, but I did find some here. The minutes from the twenty ninth, the meeting of the twenty ninth. The special workshop we did.
Correct.
And then there was one. So I don't know how we go about. There was one from January eighteenth in my folder, too.
Okay.
So there's some areas in that agenda, too. So I don't know if I'm going to go about correcting those.
So let's do this as it relates to tonight's agenda. Do you have the February twenty first agenda with item A through C? My presentation of discussion for the Inkster Housing Report and all that good stuff. You have that one?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So let's. Do you have anything to say about that as it relates to that? And then we can go to the consent agenda after that.
No.
Okay, so let's get into it. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Is there support?
Discussion.
Sound like discussion. Go ahead.
Yep, just real quick. We all had a letter from that was addressed to Allen Brothers Law Firm in our mailboxes about zoning ordinance appeals meeting. Do we want to add that for discussion tonight or what do we want to do with that?
It's totally up to this body. I know that David wanted to be here at the same time. We have Harry and Harry's getting up to speed on it right now. But it's totally up to this body.
Okay, well, I mean, it was in our mailbox and we did get a call about it and everything like that. We could start the discussion and then we could continue it. That way, at least if Harry has to go back to David and their attorneys are requesting some type of information, we'll have something that we did start the discussion.
All right, so I'm good. This is that item D. And.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Item D, A, B, C. I'm sorry, D, F.
Yes, okay, okay.
All right, item F. And that'll be the zoning. All right. Any others? Here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? I just have a motion carry. Moving right along. Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to have the Inkster Housing Commission coming before us tonight. I know that the president, along with the commissioner, is here. Would you please rise and be recognized, please? Chair and commissioners, please, rise. Commissioner Strohman, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Moore, of course, President Will Miller. Thank you guys for the work that you guys have been doing. Believe me, the residents and of course, the community at large sees the work that you're doing. So Director, if you'd like to approach, Director Ann Cooper. She's going to be leading us in the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Well, first one first. Thank you, Mayor. Thank this body for allowing the housing commission to be here this evening. We really appreciate your time and allowing us to come and just speak about what we've done in twenty twenty one. And just highlight some of the things that we plan on doing in twenty twenty two. If I could, Mayor, I'd like to at least take a moment to recognize. I know you recognize the board. So I thank the board for all their hard work and allowing me to be the executive director, but also like to recognize my staff who truly do the work.
Of course.
Day in and day out. So if the staff could stand and be recognized. And Ms. Pope was a part of our resident council. So again, we're all partners and we're all a team over here, but I just wanted to recognize everyone for their hard work.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So what we have today for this body is a presentation, and I'll be brief. I'll just highlight some of the things. We did leave a copy of the annual report with Ms. Vernon. Thank you very much so for you all to review at your leisure. We also will have information on our website should any of the public also like to review and kind of look at some of the things we're doing. So. So why are we here today? For the Inkster Housing Commission, what we have done is we've worked on a strategic plan. We've worked on coming out, making sure that the public was aware of some of the things that we're doing. It was kind of a five step process. We did engage the council members as much as possible, the mayor, our residents, our resident council, and just some of the community stakeholders. So what you see before you is some of the things that came out of that, including a new mission. And I won't read these for the sake of time, but we have a new mission. We have a new vision. And we have new values. And so for the council, it's important for us just to just to kind of, again, bring these to the council so you all can kind of see where we're going and some of the things that we want to do moving forward. Again, why are we here? We're here because we truly are partners in what we do. Inkster Housing Commission is not an isolated grouping of properties, if you know. You know, we are a part of the city. Our residents are a part of the city. Our staff is a part of the city. And so we want to make sure that the city understands and for everyone else that we are truly partners. There's several things that we like to do as we move forward in which the partnership will be valued from the city, from our constituents, police force, and everyone else. So. Couple key things I'll just highlight in the presentation. And I'll go here. So our strategic plan for city council essentially consists of six goals. And again, for the sake of time, I will not read the goals, but what I'll do for the city council and for those watching is just kind of sum up. You know, what are these goals? You know, how did we come up with these things? Why did we come up with these things? You know, and what's our plan moving forward? So again, we kind of took a five step process in which we spoke with different stakeholders. We spoke with the community. We engaged some of our residents. We engaged our staff and kind of put it all in a pot and came up with these six goals. And essentially, when we look at these six goals, and this is our first goal, community and regional engagement. And again, I'll keep it going for time. Two, portfolio maintenance and expansion. Three, self sufficiency and independent living. Four, stakeholder satisfaction. And then five, economic development and empowerment. So again, these six goals, for the most part, as we looked and seen what we wanted to do, what we wanted to be, you know, as we move forward, these six goals, if I sum them up, economic development was a key one. The second was customer service and customer satisfaction. The third, professional development. And if I had to sum up our goals, the last word I would have, and I mentioned this earlier, was partnership. We truly believe in order for us to be successful as a housing commission, that we have to be partners, good partners. Partners with the community, not just our residents, partners with city council, partners with the mayor, you know, partners in our neighborhoods that we're in. We really felt that we have to be good partners. And how do you be good partners is you begin to be transparent. You start to demonstrate what you're doing and you start to seek input. And again, that's why we're here today to present this to city council and if there's any questions or feedbacks. Couple key highlights, if I could. For twenty twenty one. So the housing commission essentially receives about ten million dollars each year from the federal government. This is strictly federal funds. Out of that ten million dollars, about four million goes to our landlords. So we pay about four million a year to our landlords. And Ms. Nancy Sanford is our director of our Housing Choice Voucher Program. Some of you have worked with her in the past. Out of that ten million dollars, another roughly four million dollars goes to our properties. So those are our hard asset properties that you see in the community, whether it's Denby Terrace, Twin Towers, or what have you. That money goes strictly to the operation of those properties. Out of the ten million, we spent approximately four million dollars locally. And when we consider local, we're talking Wayne County. That's not necessarily the city of Inkster. And how we gather that information is from when our vendors do service for us, we have to register them, register their business, register their address. So we try to extrapolate all that information so that we can report annually, whether it's to HUD or whether it's the city council. Out of that four million dollars, this is something that we're really looking to do more of, is out of the four million dollars, about one point four million dollars is spent on local, but not just local, but MBE, FBE, Section Three businesses. And those are businesses that are majority minority, majority female owned, or there's an income based tier. It's called Section Three. So we really pride ourselves in that because that money really stays in the community. So the four million dollars, the one point four million dollars. I'm sorry. This past year, we did receive a grant from HUD and we thank HUD for this. It allowed us to continue to provide service for our residents. It was called ROSS, R O S S, Resident Opportunity and Self Sufficiency. And again, what that allowed us to do is roughly two hundred thousand dollars. It allowed us to hire an individual to work with Ms. Charlotte Coachman in our resident services department. And they work directly, and I'll go to the next slide. They work directly with our residents and our staff. And again, these are just some of the things that we did in twenty twenty one. We opened our Envision Center. We partnered with Comcast. We have what's called a lift zone over at our multipurpose building on Carlisle. And we just hosted a host of events and programs and services for our residents. So we're doing Black History this month as an example. And each month, we try to do something. We work with our resident council and we try to make sure we do something for our residents. You know, without them, we wouldn't be here. So again, this is, these are some of the things that I just wanted to highlight to city council for twenty twenty one. And then just talk briefly about where do we go in twenty twenty two. So many of you, you see our assets. You see our properties in the community. You probably heard a lot, whether it's the past or what have you. So right now, we are really looking at, again, I highlighted that ten million dollars for a reason for the city council. You know, you all that work with finances, you understand ten million, ten million dollars is not a lot of money. And unfortunately, we are really restricted in what we can do with the money. And so the challenge that we have is looking at our assets, looking at our portfolio, and making sure that we provide the best, the best housing, best quality housing that we can for our residents. So the very first step of that was strategic planning, really being strategic and looking at what can we do, what's realistic, and how can we get to the end goal. So again, for twenty twenty two, we'll be looking and talking a lot more about development. You may see some movement with some of our properties. You may see us become a little lean when it comes to the properties. And again, that's where really the partnership will be valued because we truly couldn't do it and can't do it alone. Seeking our funds, whether it's city, county, federal, you know, we look to partner with the city. Because if we improve our properties, then we improve the city. So and that's really the end result in our end goal. So again, I just wanted to thank the council. I think our board chair may have wanted to mention a couple of words. So I'd like to bring him up if possible.
Please, please, yes, sir. Let's do, let's do this as the president comes. Is it any questions for the director from this body or any comments for the director?
I'm going to say great job that you're doing over there.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Will Miller. I am Commissioner and proud to be the current board chair for the Inkster Housing Commission. I did have a little something written, but it was set up to be first, not last. So now it don't make no sense. What I do want to do is thank everybody. We are trying to move forward as best we can. We hope you guys, from your vantage point, have had an opportunity to see some of the changes and some of the new things that we're trying to do. It's been a heavy lift and I'm proud of the board. We already had everybody stand up. I'm going to try and have since everybody laughing back there, I'm going to have to introduce you to everybody because there are quite a few new faces. You don't know what they do. And so now they're going to get to stand up and say their names and introduce you, introduce themselves as to what they do for the commission. Before I do that, though, I do want to just expound on a few things because it's been a heavy lift for the last two years. We've gone from the new executives, new staff, lost a valued friend and member of the, or voice breaking, of the organization. So it's been a long ride here in these last couple of years, but things are doing much better. Things are going to keep doing better. You'll see. Keep your eyes open. With that, I'm going to ask folks to stand up. You can stand up and let me know what you do for the commission, please.
We'll start right. Oh, we'll start right there. Who already stood up?
So eager.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheila Wells. I am Human Resources Executive Assistant, City Executive Director, Mr. Mayor Cooper. And I've been with Inkster Housing for three years.
All right, congratulations.
Welcome.
To the Mayor and Council, my name is Nancy Sanford. I'm the Housing twenty five, the Director of the Section Eight. I've been with Inkster Housing for almost seven years.
All right.
Awesome.
Hello, my name is Tina Sutton, the Director of Asset Management and Management Services. It'll be one year since I've been at Inkster Housing, come back.
Charlotte Coachman, Manager of Management Services. It'll be one year since I've been at Inkster Housing, come back.
Hello, Chris Fancy, Capital Funds Management. I've been here for about five months now.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Lockhart. I'm in charge of finance. I have been with Inkster Housing for six months. It's a pleasure to serve.
Right.
Happy one day to everybody. Happy watching, Director of Client and Contracting. I started October eighteen, two thousand eighteen, so that'll be three years, four months. One week. And six days.
All right.
He is right, Anthony. Keep counting hours. I love it.
I'll keep you posted after the manager for our happy one.
Thank you guys so much for having us.
President, Mr. President, Mr. President. Go ahead and reintroduce your board, man. I mean, because it is your board. You're doing an excellent job.
You had to stand up. So I will do that. Let's start with the vice chair. Then thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm Don Moore. And I have been a mission member for almost two years. I'm also the president of the resident council, which I've been resident council for over. How could I get this council? I'm glad I'm part of the mission board. I'm glad I'm here. I'm here for all of us. I know that everyone of this room has known me. Everyone who doesn't know me, you'll get to know me. I'm one of those people. So then I just, I'm still there. And that's all I'm saying.
Hey, awesome.
And since she doesn't want to get up, this is Ms. Pope. She is a resident advisor for the resident council.
All right.
Good evening. When I'm on Commissioner James Thomas, I've been on the commission about thirty days now. I'm privileged to be on the commission with this great body.
Hello, everybody. I'm Amy Strongman, and I'm a senior member of the board. I was on twenty years ago, got fired, reappointed, and I've been here this time eight years. So it is a privilege to serve. And yes, we are moving forward. You give us a minute and we're going to have everything we need.
Now with us here is Professor Victor Wilder, another valued member of the commission. So again, thank you guys so much for giving us an opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Definitely. We definitely see the community definitely see the change. And it all starts with leadership. So thank you guys so much. Thank you guys so much. Of course, the work that you guys do every day. We are really, really excited about what's happening over in Inkster Housing. We see it. It's evident. You go in Inkster Housing now, you just feel at home. So just thank you guys for continuing to just do the work. All right, moving right along, consent agenda?
So move.
Is there support? All right, now we talked about a couple of things on consent agenda. Did we want to remove those things as it relates to those minutes? Councilwoman Wiley, you were saying some corrections.
Well, there's certain things that, you know, we've seen records that should be accurate.
Correct.
So on the.
Would you like to, typically, we consent agenda was just a consent. Would you like to remove those things and then get with the city clerk about them and then we put them back on for next meeting?
If you want to, that's fine with me. I just want the corrected thing to be in.
On the record, for sure. I totally understand that. Yes, ma'am.
So there's one, the January eighteenth meeting, it's not listed here, but there's a correction in it and it was in my mailbox, too. So we need to add that to the consent agenda.
We can do that for next time.
I can speak with her personally if you want about the other.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would suggest that my colleagues go over what they said because a lot of times it's phrased in such a way as though you were saying what we meant to say instead of what we actually said.
So what we'll do then is, are we talking about each one of the corrections on A, B, and C?
I have a correction for the eighteenth. I have a correction for the the twenty ninth.
We'll remove the twenty ninth. Mary?
Ma'am?
Kind of going on with Councilwoman Wiley, state, state as well. I believe on the earlier date, I don't have the date, but I'm thinking. But it looks like I'm missing out of the actual comments.
Okay. All right, then. So let's do, let's do this because it's just what it is. It relates to the consent agenda. The motion will, will take all of these items out and then we'll put them on the next agenda going forward. You guys talk to the city clerk about that before we get to the meeting. Does that make sense?
Well, as a point of order.
Go ahead.
If the body is not satisfied with the minutes, the errors that they see, they point them out in this meeting.
Okay.
And the corrections will be made and the record will be corrected.
Okay, under consent agenda?
Back the next meeting.
We can do them under consent agenda? We can talk about those under consent agenda?
Yes. So there's already been a motion to accept a consent and a support now in the discussion.
You don't typically have discussions doing consent agendas?
Well, if you're pulling these minutes off.
Okay. All right, then. I'll concede to that. All right, then. Give her the, give her those if you're ready for them now. Councilwoman Wiley?
Page number.
Okay, on the, I'm going to start with the longest one. On the January eighteenth minutes, he has.
Do you have a January eighteenth? I don't have eighteen. I just see seventeen.
This was in my.
Seventeen.
This is seventeen. This says eighteen.
Okay, so it's a mistake. So it should be eighteen. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
It says that I advise the council that our lobbyist, Ken Cole, had passed. And that's impossible because he didn't die until the twenty third.
Okay.
Okay, so we can correct that. On the meeting of the twenty ninth, it shows that at our workshop that Councilman Shaw was present and he was not.
That's correct.
Okay. And let's see. That's my third one.
Should have showed that you were excused. Correct.
Can I interject?
Please.
Page number four, January eighteenth, comments, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to have me at all.
Okay. Please. Go ahead.
Can we approve these with the necessary corrections?
Yes, that's what the clerk said. Okay, it was already a motion on the floor already to accept them. So we just add with the necessary corrections. Councilwoman Wiley, did you have anything else?
I can't find it right now.
Okay, then just make sure that we send those forward, please. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries. All right, now I know that we did say before that we would have boards and commissions every other meeting, but since it's on the agenda tonight, is there any appointments? Go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to Lwana Abney Mitchell, who currently presently serves on the Parks and Rec Commission. She would like to serve on the Commission on Aging. I believe there's two vacancies.
I'm not for sure on that. What if, I don't think it's no vacancy.
The list is not included.
Okay. You didn't include the list? Okay, I mean, I know that we did Ruth Williams in the one vacancy. What was the other vacancy?
It was a, it was a, it was a dispute about them being swam, but I think he's on it. Tim Williams?
Right, Tim Williams is definitely on there for sure.
And then somebody else wanted to be on there.
Let's, let's have order. So let's have order. Go ahead. The floor was to Councilman Chisholm as it relates to the position, sir. So are you sure that it was the two, there's two vacancies? Because I'm, I think.
Potentially. I think there's some confusion. So I would yield to my colleagues so we can clarify.
All right, then. Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
Because I did, I did also have an appointment to Commissioner Aging. Now, that there's some that's expired.
Okay.
It's firing the ballot a month.
Okay.
We're about a month.
Okay.
So I think that's probably where vacancy would show.
Okay, so again, I know that we said we would go every other council meeting. So it actually should be on next council meeting with boards and commissions. So let's make sure that we had that listed. And then when it's not supposed to be on the agenda, we just don't put it on the agenda. Because we do have to talk about it from some of them. Okay?
So it is, it is on the agenda. And I do have an appointment.
Yeah, for sure. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, for sure.
I need more additional agent as well.
Okay. But we just need to clarify that right now because I don't know if it is to for sure. Are you sure? Do you have yours?
I got my list right here. I can send you the inspiration dates right now. That's on the last, it was at the last.
Who was that?
That's, I think, Ms. June. So that's it.
We want to be, we want to be prepared. So.
I know that.
We want to make sure that we're prepared. So I would hate to appoint someone or reappoint someone. Yeah, I know that June is still serving and wants to continue to serve. So. Yeah, I know that Joe is, is still serving and wants to continue to serve, so.
Sir, her, her appointment. High, um, six.
Will you yield to just to bring it back in next council meeting as it relates to your appointment? Just to make sure that we're clear. On who's there and then talk to the statistician, because I know that she's been serving and she wants to continue to serve. I don't know if she's aware of her.
I need to. Uh, their orders, her, her man's package.
Right. Have you, you do know that hers is expired, is that what you're saying, you had that information? Right, okay, so would you like to reappoint her? Is that who you're doing? In her place, if she's expired, okay, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, we want to give the commission an opportunity because they've been serving for a long period of time.
And that's why it's very important that they know, because there's already been a month right now.
Right.
So if they are, if they're appointed or they know that they're coming to expire. Some letters should be sent out to them, so that they know they, uh, for expiration, because they were up for expiration at the last casting.
Correct.
So, it wasn't more than then, but.
Right, and all that flows.
Came of another, came of another meeting.
Right.
Asking, you know, when you're appointed, so.
And then, all that flows through our clerk's office, so we definitely want to make sure we see any, as a council, we see any expirations. That we let her know and then she can update them however, or contact them. Uh, or contact them ourselves, because our community is pretty small, we know all these individuals, so. I'll definitely make sure I do my part on that as well, but I would hate to, again. You know, they want to continue to serve. And they've been doing good service to say, you know. Unless you want to move forward, um. You got a motion, so it's on the floor, it's on the floor, it's a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to rescind my nomination until clarity is sought and let those commissioners who have already served it take precedence and at that time, once clarity is sought, uh, we can move forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that, alright then, so that's that, so Councilman Shaw, did you have a thought next?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do.
Okay.
I, I want this to be, you know, understood as well. That, you know, we do want. To be afloat there, so if others wants to serve, you know, you definitely want to keep your.
Oh, no, no, I told you. The floor is yours for nominations, sir, if you'd like to make one.
Yeah, I would, I would like to make one, I, I would like to appoint, uh, Gavin Schubert.
Is there support?
Support.
The move is supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any names? When they noted, motion carries. Alright then, so, let's make sure that, uh, too, uh, we'll, we'll, I'll coordinate with you on that one as it relates to Mrs. Richardson. And, uh, then you let her know to come in. And coordinate. As it relates to the information, so. Okay, oh, she already have, you already have her information, okay, alright, good. That's enough, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Wiley.
As long as we're discussing this, um, we're, we're supposed to have, uh, that information before we nominate and according to the, um.
Uh, who the person is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we said that this is in relation to, you know, us doing business that way, but we know that the actress Richardson was a former council person.
Yeah, I'm understanding that, but if we're not gonna do it, then let's go back and change the ordinance.
I don't think it's a service.
Or if, it's not in there and I know, I mean, it's, uh, what he was talking about, if there is somebody, because. The standard for, uh, commissions is that you serve until you're replaced.
Correct.
Even though your, uh, your, uh, term has expired, same way Lorenzo Monahan continued to serve even though he was in Alexandria, that's what it states. So, if we're gonna change that, then we should make those changes within the ordinance or the, um, the, the, uh, paper where we have governing boards and committees. So that we won't run into this.
Yeah, for sure, I, I totally agree one hundred percent, and I think that actually happens with the bylaws from our, to the court. As each body and how they should be appointed, who should be on those boards and things of that nature. So, we, we definitely need to, uh, I get the consistency part. So as it relates to the board, I know that we had said that we would have a resume attached if we were going to. So, if that's what we're gonna continue to do, let's, let's do that, but in this case, she's nominated, we know who she is, we don't do that for her, okay?
And I do, I do, I do believe that she did, because that's something.
Is she, she did, okay, alright, again, so I think the confusion comes in, again, just, we, we know that tonight, we had Board's Commission last week, this body did say that we agreed that we could do that, we yell it. Possibly, so now we're spending more time on it.
Yeah, and, and it should've been done, like I said, it should've been done at the last meeting because it, you know, it weren't, uh.
Got it, okay, alright, any other? Hearing none, moving right along then, let's get off on two, is this the second reading? Yeah, for sure, did you?
So, item A B is the second reading, uh. An ordinance to repeal Inglewood ordinance number eight seventy-nine to rescind the payment of lieu of taxes. Currently in place on the Cherry Hill Senior Citizen Housing Development.
Alright. Perfect, moving right along into new business, item A, you're the clerk.
So nine A is for this body to consider adopting the ordinance to repeal Inglewood ordinance number eight seventy-nine. To rescind the payment and lieu of taxes currently in place on the Cherry Hill Senior Citizen Housing Development Center. And operate Scotty C A and place the property on the April one tax bill effective December third first, twenty twenty-one.
What's your question?
So move.
Support, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any names? I have seven most curious, item B.
Item B is for this body to consider adopting the ordinance to provide for the acquisition. Construction, installation, furnishing and equipping of additions and improvements. To the water supply sewage disposal system of the city. To provide for the issuance of cell junior lien revenue bonds. To pay the cost they're of, to provide for the collection of revenues from the system. Sufficient for the purpose of paying the cost of operation and maintenance of the system and paying principal. And interest on the bonds to provide for the segregation and distribution of system revenues. To provide for the rights of the holders of the bond and enforcement thereof to establish separate series of bonds. Of senior and subordinate status with respect to the net revenues of the system to prescribe the form of the bonds. And to provide for other matters relating to the bonds and the system.
So move, Mr. Chair. Your support?
Support.
Moving properly, support it, let us have, uh, Mr. Business.
Just do quickly what you did earlier in the orientation and then I'll bring him there. To the audit, to the viewing audit. On behalf, on behalf of the City of Michigan Department of Public Service, that we, uh, did a special meeting. Asked, um, some, we did a special meeting, asking to go out for bonds for the water and pressure the city of Inglewood. And today we have our bond attorney give, Mr. Ryan Syton, our attorney go over him, now to the spray and blow here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. My name is Ron List, I'm with Miller Canfield, uh, Attorneys, we're bond counsel to the city. Um, what you have before you tonight is both a bond ordinance and a notice of intent resolution, items B and C, under new business. The first item is the bond ordinance, which authorizes the issuance of various series of bonds. Uh, for, to finance the cost of improvements to the city's water supply and sewage disposal system. You'll be selling these to the state under the Drinking Water Revolving Fund and Clean Water Revolving Fund programs. Uh, you're authorizing bonds to be issued up to forty years in an amount not to exceed nineteen million nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. At a rate, an interest rate not to exceed two and one eighth percent per year, which is a good low cost of financing, uh, for long-term bonds. Um, the second item, should I, shall I stop or can I talk about both at? So the second item is the notice of intent resolution, which is required under the Revenue Bond Act. Um, which puts noted, users of the system on notice of the city's intent to issue bonds. Um, the, the adoption of the ordinance is laid out, the requirements in Act ninety-four, the Revenue Bond Act of nineteen thirty-three. Um, and it basically provides you don't have to go through the normal ordinance adoption process of a first and second reading and publication. It just merely says that you can adopt it at the meeting and it can be published in a notice in a, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. And that is all that you need in order to properly adopt the ordinance. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I mean, number one, everybody wants, you, you said it earlier, as it relates to, is it gonna cost the city any more money or the citizens any more money as it relates to the water rate?
Yes, so a portion of the bonds are forgivable because they're for the lead service line replacement under the Booker Grants, uh, from the federal government. Um, and then the remainder are paid from, uh, the rates and charges of the system. I believe the sys, this, uh, the city has already adopted the rate increases for, uh, to pay the debt service on the bonds. Uh, that's one of the things we have to show the MFA when we, before we issue them, that the, the rates and charges will be sufficient to pay debt service.
One additional question, Mr. Chair, go ahead, please, uh, just came up, any event, because of, as you just spoke of forgivable, uh, say in the foreseeable future. More funds come down from the federal government, even though we've already voted on these bonds and things of that nature, is it able for, I'm sorry. Is the city unable to go after those particular funds to pay off those bonds so we can lower the rates in the future, should that come about?
So. The short answer is probably no, and the reason I'll, I, I say that is because this. Um, generally, the way the grants work, they'll be issued for new components of a project. They won't be used to pay off old bonds that have already been issued. So it could reduce, um, you know, the future issuance of bonds, but it won't necessarily be able to be used to pay these off. So it could forego the need to issue bonds in the future.
Understood, thank you. And that's, I, you're the floor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other question? Uh, hearing none, Mr. Business, if you please, approach, thank you, sir. And just tell us exactly as community, what you thought it was gonna be doing.
So with the funding that we're getting, we were doing, the eastern outfalls was consistent of this area over here. We were B D combining the sanitary sewers and the storm sewers separated, making them on, set on their own. In the southwest district, we will be installing new water mains and we will create new sewers over there. On North River Park Drive, we would be putting in an eight-inch water main in that area, but that's what the money will go towards.
Alright, any questions, Mr. Chair, from the body? Councilwoman Washington first, please.
Um, how come all this project is gonna take, or what should it be?
These projects now that I've spoken of, are at ninety percent completion, so in the next month or two, it will be coming for you guys. Once I go out for bid to award, to a contract, so we're trying to get all these projects started this year, completion in next year.
Alright, Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, how does this, because I believe you said you're separating the sewer and the something, uh. How does this impact the flooding we've been having in the, in Inglewood?
It improves our system tremendously.
It, does it then, does it take more water than it has in the past, what we have now?
Right now, we have, and there's a lot of areas in the city of Inglewood because we have older community, our system is combined. So the same storm water goes into the sanitary system. So once you separate, now the sanitary system stands on its own and the storm water goes into the drain separately, which reduces flooding.
Oh, okay, and so with this separation too, uh, environmentally, is there some sort of echo? Since they were together before, now they're being separated, they're going in different directions, I don't know.
I was playing, I was playing to you like this. And I'm speaking all with the mayor, we've been on several calls with the state of Michigan. So this is E G O, which stands for environmental, like Great Lakes, you know, it used to be M D Q. So this is what they have been pushing for local cities to separate their system, to reduce the flooding, so we're mandated by law to do this. So that's why we're getting this funding to do that, so yes, it improves the system and increase the age on the system, and it gives us a better system.
I get the question, though, to just, just kind of echoing what the Councilwoman Wiley was saying, does it make us more eco-friendly? As it relates to the, the infrastructure and components that you're gonna be using?
Yes.
And is this something that's gonna be repeated throughout the city?
Yes. This is just, this is just.
Mono, monosyllabic.
This is just a start, this is just a start, like I explained to, uh, Mr. Syton, we in the process now. Of doing phase two, we're putting that together right now, to go back to the state.
What was the impetus for putting, for doing this one first, is there, is, it was the most needed or?
So, in the city of Inglewood, I would say maybe twenty years, we have been dormant and maintaining our system. So what we did, along with me and my engineers, as we looked at the most critical areas in the city that needed addressing. Fires, flooding, water main breaks, and like we said, in the southwest, there's, what, what's that, military housing home there, so they have like four inch main. When you take a four inch and increase it to eight, you increase the fire flow and fire rating over there. You get them a better sewer system for future investments. So that's, so I look at a project, I look at the city as a whole, and I look to see what areas we can address this need that we give it.
Now, the other parts of that, though, Councilwoman, and Mr. Business is being modest, is that we received a grant to actually do a study. As it relates to the infrastructure of the whole of the city. So, explain that to the community as it relates to the rating for a five versus a.
So several years ago, we received a S R grant of two million dollars, and I think all you guys, except for Councilwoman Williams and. Councilman Washington were on council there. So in the process of getting that money, we did a study of our, our storm sewers and sanitary sewers. With that, we came up with a twenty-year plan, which we approved for three million dollars a year. To repair our, our storm, our sanitary sewers, which means we're lining, we doing pipe bursts. Along with that, we received money from the federal government to do a study of our water infrastructure. We had, then it was, uh, Tucker Young and Associates, now after Benish. Did a study for us and this model was put together for the next twenty to thirty years on how to better share the city's infrastructure and enhance it. So that's what the mayor is speaking on.
Okay.
So, what we, I think he was on council at the time, back in two thousand and twelve, in that area, so this is what we've been working on for years.
Thank you.
And as I always say, as going to my seat, the best is yet.
No, I'm just kidding.
As I say, the best is yet to come, because we're moving forward, we, we're changing the landscape of the city of Inglewood, roads and, and for sure.
Don't try to get out of here, though, uh, come on, because we got more questions or comments, but let me just say this. As it relates to what the city has put forward to the federal government, uh, and the state government and the county. How much money have you put out as, you know, looking for grants, seeking for grants right now?
So.
With your projects?
We got one point six million for, um, land and service. We just went to the state to ask for, what was it, forty-two million, Councilman Chisholm?
I believe so.
Forty-two million, and that's to do the sidewalk program and to complete the eastern outfalls, instead of doing it in three phases to complete it totally. Uh, we got eighty thousand for speed bumps, uh, what else?
I ain't trying to put you on the spot with all that stuff, I mean, that's all stuff that we've already received, but I just, as it relates to just the general.
We're going out for another sixteen million for infrastructure for phase two, so we're doing that, um, we're going out. We're looking to go out for, uh, I was talking to him today, so I'm looking to go out for a bond for Harrison Road for twenty-five million.
I see.
Now, the other part is that, is that you're gonna be starting Avondale. Now, the other part is that is that you're gonna be starting Avondale.
We're gonna start Avondale in the cut, next couple of weeks, we will be hosting town hall meetings. The flyer should be out next week, it'll be posted on our website. I'm gonna do a series of, uh, town hall meetings here in the chambers. For the whole city to educate them, Avondale's eleven point, almost twelve point, almost twelve million dollar project. Which is road and infrastructure. And we'll start in phase one, which goes from here and go up to eastern. And then phase two will be following that either September, October this year, and then the final phase will be done next year. So totally, that project will cost us roughly fifteen million dollars once completed.
Yeah, and then it also should be said as it relates to our roads, because we know that the roads, yes, in the state of Michigan is terrible. And, but, you know, as it relates to this work that you're doing for infrastructure, you will be putting new roads across over.
These would be the road, it would look like, it would look like. Roadwork I done at John Daly, and you saw the roadwork that I done on, uh, Annapolis. So the roads will begin to look like that, which gives you a life expectancy of thirty to forty years.
All right, what question, will we ever do Harrison?
Will we ever do what?
Will we ever do Harrison?
Yeah.
I just, we had a conversation.
Twenty-five million. Costs so much.
Calls every, every, every council person of that in the town and say, do something about Harrison.
I would say with the help of Mayor Wimley, my engineers and my staff, we constantly, every day. That's all I do every day is I'm chasing money for the city of Inxter. Major part of my job.
I'll be on it for every penny.
He called me every, he called me even though the weekend, he'd be on.
Too much he'll say sometimes, okay. All right, uh, I did see some, Councilwoman Williams, please.
I did, I can do, uh, on all of the, uh, grants we're getting to do the infrastructures. Uh, once we complete all of these, uh, where will we be at for it percentage-wise of what we have to do in the city next year?
So.
Good question.
Ten to fifteen percent this year? Ten to fifteen percent? I mean, I have the, when you look at, the city of Inxter has been dormant for years. So I will be going through to revamp the whole city. These projects will be going long, they will be continued when I'm long gone.
But are you saying, I come back, cause I can't, I hear you. We, we're only gonna complete fifteen percent?
Ten to fifteen percent this year.
Of this year?
Yes.
No, I was talking about the money that we, we going after. And different things, what will we be able to accomplish, what I'm saying is.
Each year, my goal is to pu- complete ten to twenty percent of the city.
That's what we got going on right now.
About a set five to seven-year project as it relates to getting things done and relates to the completion of the entire city.
You still gotta go, go further to get the road to accomplishments to, to, to tackle the rest of them?
Say that again.
It, it, otherwise, you said it'll be a fifteen to twenty percent percentage of what we gotta do. What I'm saying is, so that means we got to somehow go down the road and accomplish the, the other part.
So.
Order to do that, you saying the seventy or eighty percent that we still have to do.
What we're trying to do, you're looking at the next twenty to twenty-five years to make the city whole. Update the whole system.
We're trying to get that plan together where we have that money, where those things will be completed.
Basically, what I'm doing is laying the foundation for the city of Inxter to move forward.
You might be around.
Where, where we can get the things done and it won't break our, break you.
Break the shit.
Taxpayers and water rates and all that stuff going crazy. Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
Now, just in a smaller chunk, when you do an avenue, what, what are you starting towards?
We gonna go from Henry Rough to Eastern. Because it encompasses, you know, it's northwestern, northwest section of the city where we, we doing the roads in your area. And that's, that's road improvement and water main too.
That's northwest, so you're gonna come.
So where, so when we go from Avondale, we going from Henry Rough to Eastern, that's phase one. And it comes in phase one includes your streets and the northwest section.
Is that Avondale from Eastern to John?
That's phase two, from Eastern to Inxter Road, and then the final phase will be from Inxter Road to Beach Day.
But that's a three-year project because of the season.
So, yeah, so, so phase two should be like, what, a while, a year and a half or so?
No, phase two will be started, um, May, October, early November this year. We plan on having all three phases done by twenty twenty-three fall or winter.
Cause when, you know, once this, once this water starts coming, you know, those, I mean, this guy, I mean, just huge. Now, what will be temporary that we're going to move into? Or is getting some of these codes and stuff filled out, do we have a game plan for that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, today, we were supposed to take shipment order of fifty tons of cold patch, it will be here tomorrow. And that, we will be doing Avondale, and we'll be doing Cherry Hill and John Daly with that fifty tons of cold patch.
Pothole Patrol. Potholes, believe me, we're working on that, but it also should be stated for the record for the community.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Bivins, use your data, you, you, you did the, you did the research, you actually did the work. So the reason why we're doing Henry Rough to Eastern first is because.
That's the worst area in the city.
All right.
Okay, so, let me explain it to you.
I said the same thing.
I mean, every three years, the city of Inxter does a PESI study, our roads are rated one through six. Avondale was rated a one or two, which is extremely bad, it's along with Harris. But Avenue is a connection between Westland and. I mean, Avondale's connection between Westland and Devon Heights. So it's a pass-through for us, so, cause the mayor asked me the same question. Based on that study that I provide to the state, and each year, I have to do something with the Act fifty-one money. As I'm your street administrator. So we look at that data and we start formalizing projects, like we're formalizing projects for FY twenty-three. They will be sent to the mayor, we will have a budget meeting, explaining to him why we doing this, based on the PESI way. Everything we do is scientific, is based on the study that we've already performed. So you might think something is worse than the other, but based on the study that we've done, and the engineers put in. This is determined, this is the best bang for our buck at the time.
Well, we know that the whole road is the worst.
Right.
It all needs work, it's all the same, so, I mean, let's just say like it is, from Henry Rough to John Daly is terrible. At, at the same time, we know that based off of this study, it says that we should start here.
Should start Henry Rough and go to East.
Go to, so the work is planned out, so we have the plan.
We had the plan.
We have the plan and we're gonna work to play it until we get it done.
Because when we get to Inxter Road and Avondale, then we will be directing the sewer flow towards, uh, the C S O basin on Inxter Road.
Correct, because we're doing infrastructure at the same time.
Cause you seen, you seen also roads through the eastern two over there by the school.
Yes, yes. Councilman Shaw, let, let me, let me put it to you very simple and brief. The roads in Inxter are bad. And it's, it's not a one Pacific area, it's like the whole city. So, at, and like I said, based on the PESI study, this is our way of, uh. Doing it in a systematic way and getting the best bang for our buck.
And that's why, that's why I asked about what the temporary, you know, what we would have far as the patch.
And so, when I told the mayor, I was getting this fifty pounds, fifty tons of cold patch, I told him right quick before he could say Cherry Hill. Um, Inxter Road to Beach Daly, John Daly, cause it's horrible from Cherry Hill to Michigan. And, um, what was the third?
Avondale.
At Avondale.
It's the main one. Avondale, Harrison, we gonna go down Harrison, so.
Yes, sir.
Just to clear for kitchen, um, wha- okay, now, I know you're talking about long distance, you know, going patching at, at long distance. But what about the short distance in the different areas that we have, for, for, it's like, give you example, Annapolis to, uh. What's that, Pine, uh, Spring Hill.
And that, that's our brand new road.
It's about the street.
No, I'm talking about the street.
Yeah, so we're gonna be getting to those interior streets, you know, right after that, so we wanna make sure we take care of the main.
Some more area, what I'm talking about, where, where they have the patching there.
Yeah, we, in the course of spring and summer, we patch the whole city. We do, we really do, we go around, between the spring and the summer, we go out, and trust me. The mayor will attest that, we go out and we patch the whole city. And we've done that the last couple of years.
So, so let's say this, so we won't have any, you know, you have a number where people can call, right, so give them the number.
Three one three five six three nine seven seven four.
Oh, go ahead.
Nine seven seven four.
All right, and not to belabor this too much longer, this is in your city calendar, if you don't have one, you can go on our website. It's on the website as well. Also, as council people, we should be in our districts, looking in our districts and then reporting that stuff to Mr. Bivins directly. You don't have to come to me and report to me, report it to him directly. Put it on the email, that way we can follow it and we can check it off, or for the general population and us, we can use See Click Fix. Cause we're paying for it.
Yes.
So let's make sure that we're utilizing that, okay? Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Okay, Mr. Bivins, uh, can you tell the audience of what temperatures that you can do cold patching? Cause I know I probably called your office the other day and like.
This, well, below freezing cold patch does not work.
Okay, okay.
It has to bind together.
Okay.
It has to bind, so it has to harden.
Some people don't know what below freezing is, so what is?
Oh, thirty-two degrees.
Well, it has to be above thirty-two degrees for us to patch.
Okay, that's why I wanted.
That's why we taking advantage of these next couple of days.
Right, right, okay.
A- and I understand this, like Mr. Bivins said before, Easter's over fifty years old, like a lot of the communities around us. But we haven't been, you know, we haven't had a plan or done anything to our roads in twenty years. That's two decades, so we need to continue on what we're doing. We know this coming with the cost, but we're gonna try our best not to pass on that cost to our taxpayers for the water rates, cause I know that that's important. We're definitely talking with, I actually meet with the governor this Wednesday, and I'll be talking to her about, they have about twenty billion dollars. That they, they, they claim they don't know what to do with. I'm like, okay, give it to Inxter, we can use that whole twenty billion, but, you know, that, that's what we're gonna be doing. And, and setting the plan and working the plan, so I need all of you, especially here on council, in your district, are you out? You know, send us pictures, send us, you know, Councilman Shaw, you already know the routine, I know you do it every time, but you know all of us, we should be going, okay? Anything else for, for, for this? All right, all the favor signified by saying aye? Any names? I just have emotion carries, item C, this side ties right into this, go ahead, uh, see the clerk.
Yes, this part two of this presentation, consider authorizing with city clerk. To publish the notice of intent to issue revenue bonds for the water supply and sewage disposal systems.
Which player? Simple, the mood and property supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all the favor signified by saying aye? Eyes have emotion carries, item D.
Consider adopting a resolution on behalf of the city of Inxter. To close Inxter Road beginning July seventh, twenty twenty-two through July tenth, twenty twenty-two. For the Easter Summer Festival.
Don't move, Mr. Chair. Is the mood and properly supported, any discussion? All the favor signified by saying aye? Any names? Eyes have emotion carry, I did say an orientation that on from this body, if you guys want to volunteer, please let me know. Because this is no cost to the city, but we know the time is needed for people, so if you wanna get involved. We're, we're definitely starting to meet, we've already had a couple of meetings as it relates to the festival, seeing if it was something that we should be doing. Especially understanding what's happening with the pandemic, but it's an outside event. Um, with the proper controls, it should be really nice and it's needed within the community, especially to boost the morale within the community. Um, so I look forward to you guys, if anybody's gonna join us. All right, item E.
The next item is adopting a resolution on behalf of the city of Inxter to close Inxter Road on May thirtieth. Twenty twenty-two for the annual Memorial Day Parade.
Which player, who moved, there's support?
Support.
The mood and properly supported discussion. Inxter Road, um, for Michigan Avenue, Inxter Road. So we're gonna do, we're gonna go to, from the food max up to South River. The reason why we were doing Michigan Avenue is because for some reason, um, people were stuck as it relates to the tribute. That's at the police department.
Wait.
Is there?
This is for a Memorial Day Parade.
A Memorial Day Parade.
It's at City Hall.
Yeah, the memorial, you pass, the parade is supposed to.
Come on up, Mr. Bivins, and explain what we, what we doing. That we, that we, we on the same page.
So what we're doing is, um, when I first got here years ago. The ra- parade has always been on Inxter Road. Once we finish on Inxter Road, they have like a talent show or something down South River in the parking lot by the ice rink. From there, we would go to City Hall, which was so, South River and Inxter Road, and they would have. You know, I mean, the police station, they would have the memorial circuit. Of course, the city hall has moved here now, the memorial is here, but what the mayor came to me and approached me with, is he wants to take it back. To Inxter Road, where it's more private and it's, and I can close more instead of Michigan Avenue. Michigan Avenue, I didn't can close so much, now I can close the whole street, like we do for the summer fair. So that's it, that's my thought pattern, and he agreed with me, take it back to its roots.
Any objection to that?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Considering that the whole idea of the memorial parade, are you moving the veterans memorial back over to the old police department then?
No, it's gonna stay where it is at the police department.
Some type of tribute. Go ahead.
My understanding was that the parade is supposed to pass that memorial.
Well, you got.
That not the case.
Chief, you wanna chime in on that, or no, I'm not putting you on the spot with that?
No, I have to, this is a veteran's thing, this is really a law enforcement thing. Veteran memorial, our, our memorials and all this, so, but.
But that's what I understood, that's the whole reason why it went down Michigan Avenue in the first place, or else it could have stayed on, because the memorial was here in front. If that's not the case, y'all do whatever you wanna do, I'm just asking because that was my understanding.
Well, we wanna do, we, we, let me just make sure we clarify, it's not that we wanna do what we wanna do, we wanna do what we're doing together as a community. So you bringing up that issue for us to have clarification, cause somebody else may have that thought, cause I had the same thought, you know? That I was like, okay, we doing down Michigan Avenue, what's the reason? All because of the police station.
Not because of the police station.
Not the police station.
It was told, it was told to me because they had to pass it at the police station, like Councilwoman Wally just said, so I'm just repeating basically what she just said.
I did not say they had to pass the police department, I said they had to pass the veterans memorial.
At the police station.
Oh, it's out front.
Here, okay, yeah, I heard that too. Okay, so, 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 so at any rate, we don't have to do that. At the same time, if we need to, can we take the memorial to East Road, Michigan Avenue?
I don't think so, it's heavy.
It was there before, or you do some type of, you can do some type of tribute, it's, it's no reason why. I was asking, can we move it to there, why not?
That's a, that was moved from old city hall here, the plaque itself, but that's a rock built to tell the ground.
Okay, that's that question, okay, so can we do some type of tribute at the halls, yeah?
Man, it's just their name, place, and not there.
So we can do some type of.
We can do.
We can build some type of.
Tribute to them.
Yeah. The synergy is at East Road, Michigan Avenue, let me, let me just say this, I, I've had a, a chance to experience both of them for years. Let's have, let's have order in the audience, if you guys wanna speak to this, you can in the comments. But, um, it's like, at East Road, we have. At East Road, you just have, I mean, it's the community, it's the heart, it's like our vein. So if you're from Cherry Hill to East Road, you got people coming out of the, out the neighborhoods, coming into the area. You have, I mean, it's all the businesses up and down East Road, I mean, it's walkable, it's just so much better than Michigan Avenue. You know, I get the, under, I get Michigan Avenue, and I get going past the memorial, but in this day and age with technology. We can actually take a picture of it, make a nice billboard or whatever we wanna do, a nice promo package, put it together. And go back to where we should be at the heart of East Road, Michigan Avenue, I mean, the same thing, I believe with City Hall.
And we could, we could, I could, Veterans Association.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, what? Go ahead, I don't think we're, 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 we're disturbing the peace, if you will.
Yeah, I have no problem with it, that was just gonna be my question, because the parade always terminated at the memorial. So it's two, it's the police memorial, the police department, but it's the veterans memorial, which used to be at City Hall, which is now here, um, just for the ceremony, so. Again, like Mr. Bivens just said, as long as we coordinate with the veterans, because more so, we're honoring them, it's not just a parade for the city, it's a parade for the veterans. And so I think, um, in this, even though we do vote and make the decision, I think they should have a say-so in what happens with the parade that honors them and their fallen comrades, because there's pictures of me on Facebook when I was at the parade with my grandfather and everybody else who were grand marshals and stuff like that, who would wanna say in this.
We've already talked to them already, and they agree with Inglewood.
I mean, that could have been brought up, so we could have, you know, consolidated this discussion there, that wasn't, all right. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome, anything else, go ahead.
As I was letting you tell, I want to address.
Okay.
I know.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, all the favor, six to five, I say aye?
Aye.
Any names? All, you got one name? All right, oh, that's, oh, you got, all right, we'll just make sure we note that for the record. All right, brings us to public comment, we asked that when you approached this.
Don't we get one more?
Second?
We got F.
Oh, we did do item F, I know I got you over my ear, Mayor Proton. All right, item F, please, go ahead, city clerk. Item what? Item F, that was the letter that we received about the potential lawsuit, about the zoning board. Yeah, I think it's just up for discussion, right? Did you, um, did you, we need, so yeah, so it's no, yeah, it's no action to take, so we don't even need a motion for discussion, right?
No.
So we probably just bring it up, why don't we just, Councilwoman Wally, just bring it up? I mean, Councilman Chilton.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, just bring it up when your comments.
You said during my comments?
Yeah, okay. And then we can discuss, that make sense? All right, guys, let's move right along with the public comment, brings us to the time where the general public can speak to his body of any issues that they have. Because actually you approached, of course, that you're respectful of our, our time, we asked you to speak for one minute, and pick your name for the record. Gabe Henderson.
Good evening, family, how's everybody doing? Hope everybody's doing well this new year we're starting in. I'm here actually for the We Rise Together Program. It's a positive program that's been going on in the city of Inglewood, and I wanna read, uh, the information, okay? That, uh, okay, it says, okay, excuse me, you wanna need by spec, I mean, these spectacles here. Okay, it says, who we are. The We Rise Inglewood Collaborative is a collaboration between the City of Inglewood Department of Parks and Recreation, the NCAAD, New Step Family Service, and Citizen Churches, and many organizations in and around the city of Inglewood. Our mission, to respond both to the community and human needs of our children and families by providing caring service and resources. Our purpose, the purpose of the collaboration is to support our children and youth to, by providing a, excuse me, providing a safe and positive place for them to grow and discover the greatness in each of them. We rise, mobilize parents, legislators, school officials, and community stakeholders in a, uh, unified effort to provide all the resources and services needed to combat the school-to-prison pipeline, as well as other obstacles and negative forces that withdraw our children's path to greatness. Okay, uh, this, uh, program now is, uh, being held right now at Floyd B. Simmons Center. Uh, it used to be, uh, Malcolm X Center on Carlisle, okay? Uh, program is on Mondays from three-thirty to, uh, seven-thirty. Wednesday from three-thirty to seven-thirty. And also, once a month, we have a, um, a meeting, uh, uh, okay, let me get it here right quick. Okay, dismissed at seven-thirty, okay, seven thirty-five thirty, okay. A monthly meeting that where parents enrichment, that's on Thursday from six to eight. It's a, okay, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful program, okay, we have, uh, uh, mentoring to encourage your kids to do better, find out what's going on in school and so forth, okay? And then after that, uh, we have, uh, breakthrough sessions where we have, uh, we have carpentry works, I mean, I'm not carpentry, woodworking project for the kids, let them learn how to work woodworks and so forth, oh, know the tools and all, I help them along with that. We have the sewing class, you know, teaching them how to sew, and then they also have, okay, uh, cooking class, it's, it's a positive program. And, and we need a little bit more people to come in and help us along, to mentor, almost to get almost to a point, one, one-on-one, or one, maybe two. Right now, we got like one person might be working with like four or five at a time, beautiful program. Uh, be surprised to hear the children speak about the things that they don't know, what they wanna know, and what they want in their life and all that. And we need some, really some good, uh, more encouraging, uh, to them to do the things that they need to do, that they love to do and all that. And, uh, hoping that, you know, it'll make things better in their life. Especially, you know, our schools, of course, you know, and they've been chopped up, and you know, the kids getting up so early in the morning, and they go to school and so forth, and, uh, a lot of times, you know, where they do go, and these different schools, uh, okay, uh, location, all that, and they have a little hardship there and there, you know? So, so, we, we help them along, trying to keep on encouraging, try to make the best of the time that they are in school and so forth, and learn some of these trades, cooking, sewing. Okay, because some of the things are caught out, you know, in schools today, you don't have them like I used to, you know? So, uh, yeah, we'd like to know if, uh, anybody wanna come there, like I say, watch the program, they wanna volunteer for the program, that's on Mondays from, like I say, three-thirty to about seven-thirty, on Wednesday, from three-thirty, seven-thirty.
Awesome.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
You know.
We definitely ready to work.
Good program.
You, you guys had your Black History Program already?
Uh, sort of, got a few things that, that got underway, but we still might try to ease something in.
Okay.
Uh, before the end of the month, right?
All right, sounds great.
Yeah, okay, and, and, Mayor.
Can we have one of those?
Oh, yes, yeah, I, I wish I had enough to give to, you know, she only had, gave me the.
Well, just make sure you give it to the clerk for sure.
Okay, okay.
We'll get it to the attorney, post it on the website. Okay. Well, you know all about it. All right, okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Get one to the clerk.
That's okay, you, you just get it from her, you, if you wanna give someone else one, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yes, okay, we're gonna try to get something, uh, beautification, uh, official letter. Okay. From you, I think, Tonya, sweetheart, I think, she, I think she talked to you about that letter, so we can have something officially, if we go out and try to raise, or get monies, or get, uh, some kind of supplies, like, like Old Depot. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we'll definitely work towards that right away, so I, I'll get you on my schedule this week, so you come in and we can sit down and talk about that. Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Love, love, love you, family. Love you too. Thank you. Noah Harry, uh, Williams, I'm sorry, I know I was wrong. Noah Williams?
Good evening, honorable mayor, council, other city officials. My comment was on roads, but then I wanna piggyback off the water. I understand Avondale is not good, but John Daly from Michigan Avenue to Annapolis is horrible. When you go to make a right turn, if you're going northbound on John Daly and you get to Michigan Avenue, I go down Keene and cut in front of the police department to keep from turning right, right there. And if anybody would like to see this video at the foot of my driveway, I need to go get a wheel alignment, and I got some rear end issues because of the pothole that are dead at my driveway. I'm not gonna get it fixed until something gets done with that streak, because if I go pay money, I'm gonna send the city a bill. But there's no need to get it fixed if this is not gonna be fixed, so here's the video, I'm gonna give it to Jerome. But I'm sure they know, now Darryl told me in November, he thought he had some cold patch left, he was gonna come do it. But I know they probably shorthanded and busy, because I've been here before. Please consider John Daly.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially from Michigan Avenue to Annapolis, and definitely between Kitchen Carlisle, because I can't back out my driveway. I don't let my mother drive, she's eighty-six because the car is rocking and rolling to get in or out of my driveway. Water, the pump house on the corner of John Daly and Carlisle, how often is that cleaned? It's on, that water station, I thought it was a pump house, it's green, it sits on the, it sits on the southwest corner of John Daly and Carlisle. It used to be cleaned, they used to take the back all over there and clean it all the time. But when we had that flood in twenty fourteen, I hadn't seen anybody over there. Then they came and cleaned it, they cut all the weeds down, and they went in there and they cleaned it out, so I was just wondering.
Because I hadn't flooded in forty years, until twenty fourteen, and I hadn't seen anybody go in there and do that, and I used to clean pump houses for the Wayne County Road Commission.
So then, after that big flood in twenty fourteen, they cut the weeds down and they went in there, yeah, whatever, but what is that station right there? For water? Okay. Okay, now how often is that cleaned? Because that's what's backing us when we have a flood, this is.
Good evening, everyone, glad to see you guys tonight. Um, I just have a couple of announcements, oh, just wanna get my address, three, four, five Beetlewood, River Rouge, Michigan. So first, Op-, uh, Operation Refuge wanted me to let you guys know that their, um, event they was having, Camp Inspire with their youth event, is gonna be postponed. So I'm giving that announcement for Pastor Overman.
So just say what the event is, because she, she did ask for us to say it, but.
Oh, okay, it was the Living Museum, the youth, Living Museum, Black History Program.
Do we still get to register with that?
Yes, but, they haven't gave the date yet, when it gonna be postponed to.
Okay, she did say March the twentieth, so just to add on to that, because she just told me to make sure.
Okay, yeah, she told me to make sure I said it.
Exactly, so I'm gonna double repeat it.
Okay, same thing.
Okay.
All right, oh, I forgot to say, uh, Happy Black History Month to everybody.
Same to you.
And, uh, my Black History fact today is today Malcolm X got, uh, assassinated in nineteen sixty-five, just so you know. Keep that in your memory bank. All right, so Western Wayne County NAACP, we will start having HIV testing in the communities of Inglewood and in Garden City. Each week, on Wednesdays, it'll be at Christ Temple from ten to two. And on Thursdays, it'll be at Christian Faith from ten to two, and that was in Garden City. Pastor Hearn's Church on Wednesday, Pastor Overman's Church on, Pastor Hearn on Thursday, Pastor Overman on Wednesday, just so you guys know. We wanted to make sure that people know that HIV is still rampant, and our elderly women is actually real high, and our young men, teenagers to twenty, is actually really, really high, so if you know anybody, they might feel uncomfortable, it's a private room, they can come get tested, it's best to know your status. So make sure you spread that word around, thank you on that one, that is very, very key. And also, as part of the Telegram newspaper, we had a meeting with Wayne County Treasurer on Tuesday. And he told us about the new program they got going on, so if you, uh, behind on your taxes for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, if you have back mortgage payments and you're behind on your internet, you can get this, uh, program through the federal government. You call Wayne Metro to get the, uh, money, and they will pay your nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one back taxes. And that's even if you are on a payment plan, so let me give you this number. Write this down, it's very, very important, three one three, three eight eight, nine seven, nine nine. And it's until the money runs out. It is called, uh, Miss Beverly sent me the text, I was sitting here, let me pull it up right quick, it's the Michigan something. Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, M I dash H A F. But you call Wayne Metro to get on the list, the great thing they said is that if you call and get on the list, to have your appointment with them, you will be removed from the foreclosure list for this year. Very, very key, so I told somebody that same day, as soon as I got, uh, her appointment is scheduled for March sixteenth, so it's already scheduled. She should be off the foreclosure list for this year.
That's great.
Please do not wait, now, if you don't wanna take advantage of this awesome program, you have until March thirty-first to pay your taxes, your back taxes. If you don't pay your back taxes for nineteen, you lost your house on April first. We can't stress, stress that anymore, anymore, that is very, very key, April first is over. You've had all this time, you got your yellow note, you got the letter, you got the, uh, letter last week, you got everything you need, so please, by all means, don't lose your house when you don't have to. And I think, I think that was it, my last Black History note is, uh, Telegram newspaper, seventy-eight years this year. One of the oldest black-owned newspapers in the state of Michigan.
Right.
And I always like to share that information with you guys, that's it for me for today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Is there any way possible, do you have a flyer or something that you can give our city clerk?
I can, I got it in my phone.
Yeah, then that way Troy can kinda put it on the website for us, for people.
Wonderful, I'll send it out right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
I believe that information is already up, so, but that's great, great, keep sharing that. All right. Last but not least, you asked me to be last. Mr. Aaron Sims, a doctor, I do not want to watch your name, so you can tell us your name, come on, please present.
Good day, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Uh, first, we'd like to start off and just say, uh, thank you to the past and to the present, uh, city council, uh, for making everything happen, uh, with four-three-three-six William Street. Um, it has been deemed as a historical landmark, and you can actually find the house on Michigan's historical website.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, city council members, uh, my name is Dr. Tarek Ramadan. I'm a professor at Wayne State, uh, University, and also a longtime, uh, fan of Malcolm X, and so, uh, I joined Project We Hope Dream and Believe, uh, about a, about a year and a half ago or so. And I wanted to just, uh, inform, uh, you all that, uh, there is some great progress being made, as Mr. Sims just noted. Uh, the home is now on the national registry, um, so the State Restorative Preservation Office has recognized it, and, and, and now it is officially and formally on the registry. Um, uh, on top of that, uh, I wanted to add, uh, that, uh, Wayne State will be teaming up with, uh, the nonprofit, uh, to, uh, conduct archaeological excavations at the home, uh, sometime in the spring to, uh, help contextualize Malcolm's life here in Inglewood. Uh, Malcolm died on this day, you know, February twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-five, uh, but his career, uh, as an activist, and, 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 and a, and a leader for, for civil rights empowerment, uh, begins, uh, in Inglewood. Uh, a week before he passed away, Malcolm mentioned the fact that he used to live in Inglewood, uh, before he was assassinated. Uh, so I think that those are, uh, so I think, you know, we're obviously, we're, we're very proud to be here on this, on this very important day, and this, this occasion to, uh, uh, help sort of commemorate, uh, Malcolm's life and achievements, and, and really bring, uh, attention to the city of Inglewood.
And, um, and I can say, today I did get a phone call from his daughter today, on today's date. As Dr. Torek said, uh, most of our information has been coming from the family of his daughters, and of Wilford, and of Ruth Williams' children. Um, so we have been in communication with them about moving the house forward, and the things that we do. Um, so we have been in communication with them about moving the house forward and the things that we do. Um, so along with the grant for, uh, the three hundred and eighty thousand that we did receive, um, we are looking to put, uh, citizens from Inglester toward. Um, I did see your post, um, on Facebook, and, uh, I did wanna reach out with you to let you know that, uh, construction will be starting in March. Uh, March or April, uh, once the weather fully breaks. And, um, we definitely wanna give contracts to, uh, citizens of Inglester. Uh, you don't have to be a licensed, uh, person, but it does help, but you don't have to be licensed. Uh, so we would like to meet with you about your program that you have going on, uh, to spread that word, and if anybody know anybody from the city of.
When you say meet with you, meet with who?
Uh, the mayor.
Okay, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, when I saw your post on Facebook about the, uh, the black ownership.
Okay, yeah, sure.
And along with, uh, anybody from council that would like to meet, we would like to meet with you guys too, so you could put the word out in your district. Um, that, you know, we will be accepting bids. Um, so most of the work will be done by, uh, Inglester residents. Um, and all they have to do is just reach out to us, uh, at seven three four, two two four, eight one two seven. Again, at seven three four, two two four, eight one two seven. Um, so they could start, uh, so we could start putting our list together of what people are experiencing and what they wanna do, um, as well. Um, so, uh, our goal is to have the house done by August the sixth of this year to commemorate, uh, Malcolm's release, uh, the day he came to Inglester. Um, and as Doctor Torque said, uh, this is the most pivotal point of Malcolm's life. Uh, and this is the part that no one talks about. Um, so out of the movies and all of the books that people wrote, um, no one has ever talked about the time he was released from prison, um, up until nineteen fifty-three when he left Inglester. So I think we hold the most sacred part of his life, uh, here in Inglester. The story that's never been told, and, uh, we wanna tell it. So, um, upon that, uh, our next question would be, uh, what's the protocol for us to ask for, like, honorary, not to change the name of Williams, but just to put the honorary name on top of the, uh, the street sign, uh, of like Malcolm X Street? Um, and also, part two to that would be if we could have like a spot on the Welcome to Ingle sign to let everybody know that, uh, he once lived here as well?
The spot is already being formulated on the Welcome to Ingle sign, Mister Vivis can speak to that if he wants to. We just were, was, you know, making sure that we coordinated that properly and then sent it to the organization just so you can kinda verify it, but we've already, we're already working on that already. The protocols relates to, the street change is through.
We're also working on that. Protocol as well.
So we're already there with you already, sir, to put that before the council.
Yeah, so, so that's the news that we wanted to tell everybody, is that we're moving forward, uh, with that project. And, uh, we do have a goal date set and, uh, for the, uh, the past council and this council, we just like to thank y'all for allowing us the, uh, opportunity to turn this into a project for the city.
One question.
Alright, hold on one second, I'm sorry, point of, point of order, sir, come on, Mister President. You know better than that. Alright, hold on one second, Councilwoman.
Is there any way, um, thank you, is there any way you can give, um, the city clerk a list of the, um, the things that, the people that you're looking for to build a house or to re-do it, so that way she can have a list and we can say it on council, we need this, we need this, and then that way we can start notifying people within our district or our area.
Yep, so not a problem. Uh, we could get that to you, but it's gonna be everything.
Okay.
From drywall, painting.
Okay, so this every, so this every, some ground, from ground zero up. Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
I also wanted to add too that, uh, for the excavations, if, uh, people are interested, for example, from the city of Inglester who would like to participate in the, the very historic and momentous occasion to excavate the, the lot, uh, in and around, uh, the home of Malcolm X, uh, you're more than welcome to. Especially Inglester students, if they are interested in joining us, uh, sometime in the, in the spring, uh, for the excavations. They did this at the home of Ella Collins, which was Malcolm's, uh, older sister in the Roxbury neighborhood in Boston. And that's well documented, as we wanna do something very similar to that, make this a very sort of a, uh, we want community engagement, uh, in, uh, in, in this project for the excavation.
Sounds great. Alright, anyone else from the council anybody? Alright, Mister President, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
I definitely appreciate your, your labor, Mister Sims, and I think I would want to say that publicly. Hard work down in the year, you know, walk together, and I've seen the great things that you've done, and this is a good thing.
President, did you have something for us? Get that phone, do it again.
So the number again, seven three four, two two four, eight one two seven. Or you can go to our website, which is W W W dot P W H D A B dot org.
That is awesome, that's awesome. I mean, you already know how I feel about the whole situation, um. And let me just add to that, as it relates to your work and what you've done, and it's shining a light on the Malcolm X project, that, um, the city of Inglester is part of a grant that has been, um, that is coming through the state of Michigan through the Historic Foundation to look at other sites within our community to put historical markers within our community. So great work, keep it up, whatever you need, you know what we're here to do. Alright. We'll write it to city clerk, you have anything for the body, for the general public? Alright, Mister Treasurer, I know you're wearing your treasurer's hat, you got anything on the treasures? Okay, part of the grant.
Yeah, part of the grant, um, will be opening up the education center in August, uh, this spring. Uh, space where you can come in and show you how to, uh, register at the college. You know, allow big office voices for an education center.
Any questions from the body, for, for Mister President? Alright, we'll write it to a very constitutionally. Councilman Shaw?
This is, this is, I just have, uh, one is a road toll off of Michigan Avenue over on Visiting Hill. At Spring Hill, uh, over there by that, you can very, uh, I, I know they need to process that, but I, I see him operating a little bit, so we just wanna move a little bit of road toll in that. And also, uh, I talked about the, the, uh, that it's supposed to be divided on that way, the developers and the stakeholders to.
Did you just speak for, uh, thirty-six months?
Yeah, so this is once and, and so on these, it's, you need evaluation or.
Right, so, so basically we need the current clerk, they're supposed to basically give us an update, unnecessary evaluation. I should have staffed us to give us an update on what they're doing, where they're at, you know, so we got enough of the information now, we can forward it to the body, um, safe as it's conducted that. So it'll be to be short. We have, out of our developers, I think we have like seven. Um, we have five, uh, two that didn't even say anything yet, so, you know, of course excuses are, we're interested to call in. I have enough workers, materials, you know, things like that, we're seeing, it's just what it is. Uh, but we will forward you that information, which is what we throw over there.
And that's the only thing, because we don't have, as you really have, we try to do the money, save the money, so. This is great for stable the ratio of, I didn't, because if you don't have, if you have, they just, you know, if you don't have it, you still have to pay all the, so it doesn't create any hybrid neighborhood as what we try to do.
Alright, Councilman.
Oh, sure, thank you, Mister Chair. Just make sure I have the, uh, student list. I can talk to you offline about my question to the vending machines, cuz I had spoken with the city clerk. And I spoke also with, uh, uh, Mister Billings, and he redirected me to, if you weren't a city clerk, so I could just talk to you offline about that.
Okay.
Um, we did receive a letter via email from an attorney firm, and it's in regards to zoning ordinance appeals. Uh, meeting involving section one five five dot one five zero A and Go Win Logistics LLC various requests. This is a matter that was taken up in the ZBA meeting back in October twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, again, it's just a letter, it's not litigation, so we couldn't discuss in a closed session. So I, I just had a question because they sent the letter to our council, which is Allen Brothers. And they were basically asking for a reconsideration. And I guess, uh, my first question is, how do we actually go about handling this properly? Because they're asking, I guess, the ZBA to reconsider, because I don't think the city council could actually override the ZBA's decision. So that's my first question on that. Um, and then, in that, I just have additional questions or concerns. Cuz I know it passed out of planning commission, um, and it needed the ZBA's approval so it can make it to council for a special land use approval. And, you know, one of, the only thing their attorneys state in here is that the two hundred, I'm sorry, the three hundred foot ordinance wouldn't have a negative impact because wherever their door would be, it'd be two hundred and seventy-five feet. So twenty-five feet, okay, that's not a big deal. But they didn't address any other concerns, which we had brought up, and I don't know if they brought them up at the ZBA meeting cuz they're only supposed to look at certain information. Um, planning commission can look at other information, and then city council can look at additional information. But a couple of things, you know, that we've been dealing with since they had first applied in, I believe, twenty nineteen, and they bought the business in twenty fifteen, was about never complying with the request that came out of the planning department. Um, there are issues pending in the courts regarding tickets, but I'm not sure exactly how that would go because that would be like with no s- business license, no C of O, and then the illegal dumping that they had on the property. Um, the taxes are also in arrears, and I know they did state that they were in a payment program or something like that with Wayne County, but I don't know where that sat, and I'm not trying to hold anybody to that, but those are concerns that I had um, when their attorney drafted, you know, this letter and this packet, but they don't address any of that, they only address the footage issue. But I don't wanna get in the habit of ignoring the rest of this, and these were rec- um, sug- um, recommendations from the planning department in the past that we asked them to comply with, which of course at a DRT meeting or administratively would be re-reviewed and say, okay, cool, you guys either made an effort or you resolved these, we can move forward and approve you. Versus saying, okay, you got a new partner now, and you wanna do something new, well, let's ignore everything else and let's move forward. And I, and I, I get the ta- uh, I don't wanna say tactics, but I get the intent when the attorneys draft a letter of reconsideration and things of that nature. And of course, we wanna see a business thrive and move forward, but we, I don't, and I can't speak for my colleagues, want to move in a direction where we don't hold business owners, just like homeowners and anybody else accountable for stuff we require them to do. Because then rumors start that, oh, you can go in Ingle and do whatever, because I know for a fact in the other surrounding communities, um, they wouldn't even tolerate not, a business not upholding their end of the deal or end of the bargain, if you will, or requirements and stuff like that. So I just wanted to know, because it's, we got a letter. So I just wanted to know what our process is and how are we gonna move forward, because if we do for one, then we open the floodgates for everybody who would use this as an example, moving forward.
Eric, did you wanna speak to that, I mean, cuz I'm not an attorney, and I think that what you said, councilman Chisholm was valid on both sides. They did submit a letter as it relates to what happened at ZBA. I know that we had all those issues come before us, and we did deliberate those issues in planning as it relates to the things that they didn't do, but it hasn't got to council yet. So I think the, the issue is the letter that was sent to us that you guys wanna talk about in a public setting for what happened on the ZBA.
Okay.
So I think if we wanna talk about what happened at the ZBA, I think that's what we need to stick to. So, uh, Eric, you wanna?
Sure, um. Councilman Chisholm, you brought up a lot of different, um, issues out here. I think one of the things that we need to remember first is that the planning commission has one job. The zoning board of appeals has another job. And really, this letter dealt with the zoning board of appeals and the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals. In order to grant a variance to, um, dis寸s requirement. That's a very, very limited scope for the ZBA to look at. That's one question, and that's the only thing that they really have any authority to look at. So they made a decision, they took an action, we got the letter, objecting to that. Already open here, we're looking at this right now, but normally, city council does not have the opportunity to overrule the ZBA. According to the zoning daily act, which sets up the ZBA, that any party agrees by a decision of the ZBA, which in this case the applicant, really what they're supposed to do is go to the service department, or the dealer. That's where, that's where it can be changed. They think that they were mistreated, and it's put a ground for a permanent, for a removal of it. I'm not affiliated with that ground, I'm not affiliated with all the, um, it's an invasion, I mean, not in addition to, I have a letter, I have a valid, um, complaint. But as I was about, thankfully, uh, the city is sort of a lot of us, is some, some without as much merit as others. Um, people can, can do what they wanna do without, without, uh, trying to force the city to do.
I guess.
To the varies, and that's the only thing the ZBA is looking at, is the request to waive the dis寸s requirement between the, the, uh, applicant and the debris building, is what it's looking at.
Okay, well, Mister Mayor, um, to the city attorney striking everything else that I said, and just talking just about the various, what's the proper protocols since they addressed this to us?
Your, um, position, there really isn't, you don't have any power to overrule the ZBA.
Gotcha.
You need to go to the service department. I think they didn't bring it into our attention, and David's not here to speak, or that's why I said, I didn't say we're talking about it. Because David said that the ZBA is supposed to give the applicant a reason, and they did. And it was mentioned to me to just to consider. So that's what we are seeing before, that we're just gonna let.
The ZBA, they, I know, they, if they want to re, rein it up on their own, they can't be notified now, if that's another question, or clarify your decision. For they, but for you, for you, you really have no, um, how unfortunately, heard the fact you have no control over the ZBA.
Alright, well, thank you, uh, I yield the floor, Mister Mayor. Okay. Anybody else want to speak, go ahead, Councilman.
There's, uh, uh, two hundred and seventy-five feet and close to three hundred feet. Is that a residential location we're talking about? Back up.
Right, back.
Back here, they back here. Okay, so, um, they're saying that this is not a, uh, it's a small amount of area that they're talking about. But I wanted to get that resident feel the same way, you told everybody, this is through ordinance, that is three hundred feet here. So when we go to, um, making special allowances like Councilman Chisholm said, that's a simple result. Cuz the next person that comes out says, oh, it's only fifteen, you know, and we go ahead and do that, or I, I think if the ordinance says three hundred, then that's what it should be, three hundred.
Well, then you shouldn't have a zoning board of appeals, because then people don't have.
You can have one, and they may disagree, but I'm saying this is our.
That's why they go to the zoning board for them to say that.
And they didn't, they agreed with us, three hundred.
Yep, I, I wasn't at the meeting. I did get a chance to look at the meeting, and I tell you, what I saw was, it was, it was interesting, to say the least.
That's what I have to say, is that if we're going to stand by our ordinance and our rules and our laws, then that's what we should do.
Yeah.
You, Mister Mayor?
Sure, go ahead, let's, uh, let's do this, uh, you, Mayor Procham, Councilman Williams.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
I, I think, you know, we bringing this issue, I, I think, um, I think the zoning of appeals. I I think, you know, we bring this issue, I I think um I think the zoning of appeals has a chairperson or whatever. I either listen to the zoning appeal, why why they made the decision what they made, okay? I mean, this is one of the issues that they say that you don't understand their reasons for saying no. Am I correct?
I don't know.
Well, I think, I think we as as councilpersons in America, we should, we should listen to the zoning of appeal and find out why they said no. Okay?
They didn't tell, they didn't give them a reason.
So they're saying they don't have the right. Okay, because right now, where I'm confused, I I'm I'm listening, I'm trying, I'm confused about uh you say they didn't make any reason why they denied it. And I I'm reading that they 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 definitely did. So I think we need to just listen to what they have to say. They they got a chairperson, am I correct?
Oh, I agree. I agree one hundred percent.
I called the whole zoning appeal, I mean.
You can watch the meeting yourself, it was on, it's on Zoom, you can actually watch the whole meeting. Clerk, were you there?
Yes.
So what?
I I think it need to be some, I I I understand, I think it need to be some 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 conversation, Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying.
Okay.
You know, not not to, not to, not to go to the tot- the total thing of 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 calling a a big meeting about it. But you and and maybe a couple of councilpersons on that need to meet and and come up with a conversation why. Okay, before we go out here and start paying all this money for the attorneys.
Yeah.
Because we don't, I, you know, we we, you know, the attorney, the attorney don't say they have a right to do this, you know, I understand that. We also have a right to try to debate this way once we come to such a lawsuit.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Um not getting too far off left, but the um, it's in my residence, in my district. Um so when we vote on planning to make decisions or up in council change ordinance, um we need to look at the residents first. Um I've been dealing with that, not this particular issue, but for a while in my district. Okay, they need to put through something, they come back, oh, we gonna waive it. But I want everybody to take a drive down Princeton. And maybe four, five houses, maybe more, on the block. And just picture yourself living there. And when you walk out your back door, and what you're looking at. So when we change ordinance, uh special land use, we need to go by each place and look at. Because they they have an awful time over there, they have been. Um, nothing was done, and they went back and they said, oh, we gonna, we don't, we gonna waive this. But I want you guys to go down that street during the day and see what those taxpaying residents have to deal with when they walk outside their back door. I went, I mean, I've been dealing with it for, I know what they're going through. But I want you guys to go back there to see. So the next time when we talking about changing stuff, go by the residence and see. Go by the areas that you trying to approve or disapprove. To see whether or not, if that was your house, would you want that? That's all I have to say on that.
All right, come on, we're watching.
No, I would just ask, I mean, after reading what was said to us, it sounds like they kind of just want to go by the high school. By completing the review process and and the only way I should do it is next.
Is that a point? That's up to, that's up to you. You, how so to have the power to order the ZBA to do that?
You don't have the power to.
No, 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 according to the, you don't even have the yet. If you don't like the decision, if you're an activist, if you go to the ZBA, if you don't like the decision, you're always going to go to court. They can't hold that out.
Well, let's let's just say when the.
We fight.
Here, I think the room is giving the letter says that they want to give it a reason, or suppose it's.
Maybe I I made it after. They asked.
And then turning into the time that was there, Eric Jones totally gave them that explanation and they did.
All right, well, I would.
But you weren't there. But I know the clerk was there, do you want to speak to this or no? You want to leave it?
What it was, there was no explanation given.
I'm sorry, I'm a degree in education, and I I just can't, I'm only sitting here listening to them saying, we we didn't get them the reason. The ordinance says three hundred feet, they wanted a variance of two seventy-five. I drove to the property, I walked the three houses that that property abates. And we based our decision solely on the ordinance to be three hundred. Because as Councilman Chisholm said, if we do it for one and the word gets off, then we're gonna make a right, we're gonna, we're going to make a law for everybody else.
Commissioner.
So I'm sitting here and say, we didn't give them a reason, I pay the fist to that.
Commission, per- per- Mayor Pro Tim. Mayor Pro Tim, first of all, I had to gavel. So hold on one second, I was letting her vent, but at the same time, be respectful. And I was gonna have you speak when I recognized you.
Okay.
This was your behavior in the meeting. So let me, let me, let's get back to being civil.
Okay.
As a commissioner, number one, you're out of order.
Okay.
So have a seat and then I'll recognize you when it's time. All right. Were you finished with your comment, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
All right, anybody else from this body wants to speak? All right, Commissioner Williams, if you'd like to speak to this body, approach the podium, please.
I apologize for my.
State your name and then s- say who you are and what's your, what what do you?
Benola Williams, I've been a resident at Inkster, I'm sixty-seven years old. And I served on the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, all right.
In the meeting on October the fourteenth, when it came before the board, we looked at the ordinance, we looked at the various requests that they asked, and they wanted it shut down by twenty-five feet. I went over there and walked the property, and I'm like, ah, with the citizens over there, I just don't think we should go against this ordinance. I was the ordinance officer for the city of Inkster for a year and a half. I buy by the ordinance, because that was my job. We denied it based on the ordinance and writing says three hundred. They wanted a variance of two seventy-five, and we denied it, case closed. We gave them that reason. I feel personally attacked to say, we didn't give a reason, when I know we did. It's not fair, because we did, and I take it personally.
When the attorney, when the attorney spoke to you at the meeting and said, give them a reason.
That's what I gave him, and I told him I was confused.
Okay.
I said, Mr. Jones, I'm confused, we just sat here and said that the ordinance says three hundred.
Uh huh.
So I told him, sir, explain it to me, because I really was confused. I was like, well, we just told you the ordinance says three hundred, they want a variance for two seventy-five, and we said no, so I was totally confused. Because he said we didn't give a reason, and we did. So for him to come back and say we didn't, plus we don't have anybody there from the city taking notes, like back in the day when Sadio, when we had a planning department and Sadio Johnson was there as administrative assistant to the planning department, taking the minutes and getting it back to you guys and everybody that it pertains to. So for him to come back and say that.
Well, you do have a plan, so you you were actually on Zoom. And then you did have the planner there that was taking all of the notes, and you had the city clerk.
Did you guys get them?
Along with the attorney, we don't typically get minutes.
I know the clerk was there, she was on the media.
Yes, so let me, just for you saying that, I mean, let's just make sure we're clarifying.
Okay.
They don't normally come to the.
So they don't come to you guys as a body, okay, okay, my mistake, I can admit when I'm wrong.
At the same time, it's actually on Zoom, where we can go back and watch.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
It it's been, the clerk was there and our city attorney was there. So when he said that you didn't give him a reason or to make the reason clearer, I'm assuming, because I haven't watched the video, then that's where that is coming from, and he's not here, that's why I didn't want necessarily talk about this issue tonight.
I get it.
You know, but I think I, I think we need to go back to what Councilman Williams was saying. And then we'll bring you guys in, bring the cherry in, we'll actually talk to you from the administrative side with the attorney and see where we're at so we can all be on the same page.
Because we just didn't do this by happenstance, we looked at the ordinance.
Yeah, that's fine, and I.
We looked at the variance.
Let me say this, I lived on Princeton for twelve years, and I actually talked to most of those residents in that area. And none of them came to the public hearing because they didn't have a problem with what they were doing.
Well, I know, I know that some of them didn't get a notice.
Just say this, that what we're gonna do, because it is, you know, like what it is, you guys are the zoning board of appeals, you made a decision.
Based on the ordinance.
We just received the the letter.
Yeah, based on the ordinance.
So, but it's not a lawsuit, so what we want to do is we want to talk to you, bring you in. So we'll figure that out, we'll get the schedule together and go from there and see if it's something that.
Yeah, well, if you go back, look, I asked the attorney, I was like, well, the ordinance says three hundred.
Right.
They want a variance of two seventy-five, we said no.
They wanted a var- let's make, you keep saying two seventy-five, so it was three hundred, they wanted a variance of twenty-five feet.
Mm-hmm, they wanted us to prove it, and we didn't, so I was confused as to why he kept saying.
That was your prerogative as a board.
We have to give you a reason, and I'm scratching my head like, we just did.
That's a prerogative as a board, but if our city attorney is there and he telling you to give you a rea- give him a reason, give him a reason.
But I didn't know what other reason to give him other than that one, that's why I was confused.
Not here, at the same time, let him get here.
Okay.
We'll come back and we'll talk as an administration.
Okay.
And see if there's anything that we can do from there.
Okay, okay.
Either way.
Okay, no problem, all right, thank you.
I appreciate that. Commissioner McDaniel, did you have anything to add to that, because I know that you were at that meeting as well? Uh, okay, thank you, man, I appreciate that. All right, moving right along, sorry about that, because I stay on test as much as possible. Councilman Williams, do you have anything for this body?
I have, um, I I would just like to, you know, talk about speed bump.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't want to get that that that. Give us a bit of exactly where each speed bump is going, you know, the name, everything like that. But they have exactly where they were going, I think, right, going, if it's going in our district, if it's giving notice. How, you know, where they going?
Yes, sir, um, we did, um, give it to this, the entire body and the state commission as we next to those streets determined by the amount of calls that were received from the police department and complaints that were received from this councilman by. And we put it into the, to the, to the state for the rent that we received outlying those streets. And you do have information about the constabulary system back out in the day. Um however, what I, what what we can do, we can send it out again, and then we can actually share it with the community in March.
What's that, what's that? Oh. I I I I, what I'm saying is, you know, the indicator search is hot today, who are you, okay? But they didn't have any aid, they take take directly the business there on, okay, and and whatever. And in their area, you know, we named, we named a lot of new street, okay?
What you say to this law?
First of all, new street, I think, if you say. At the end of the street.
Okay.
End of the street, um, one, two, three, four, five.
And prostitution, right?
Exactly.
Okay, go over this guy.
So, I'm going to tell you this. Are we going to do the whole street?
Yeah.
Hey, are we going to do this street here, I have to go to this street?
Okay.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the other agents of money, are we going to be able to do all of them?
No, not at all. We don't receive, we don't receive thirty thousand dollars, um, and we won't receive that until two, three.
So, I hope, I'm definitely okay, like this, you do what you want to do. But I'm just, if it's our history, whatever, whatever speed bump is going in our history, I think, well, and we can have a conversation, that's on.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I.
We're just determining your street's condition.
So I'm just figuring out, we gonna put them here, we gonna put them there. What I'm saying is, I'm just bringing out tonight, I appreciate it, and for that, we're gonna put these people out there. First of all, we have a conversation, that I know where they going, I can, you know, my people where they going, stuff like that. That we're gonna get a bunch of bro, um, let the people get, you know that.
Sure.
But when they know that it's a benefit, I'll definitely do it, we'll do it for our. Because we have a great idea of the package, where the scene that taking the hand up, you know, would you, would you have that?
Okay, makes sense. So it sounds like you, you want to, you want to time off, you visit.
I agree, I agree.
When you time off, when you visit, and you come out and you talk. And then you finish, come out and do a presentation.
You want to do that.
Okay, sounds good. I'm looking forward to that. That's where anybody want to do that, with this councilman by. We'll make sure we do that for you. Anything else? All right, Councilman Williams?
Yes, sir, um. I would once again ask for my comparisons, building department in source, reference outsourcing. Um, I would like to know now that we're back in person, is the three-minute rule for public participation back in effect?
It will be up to this body, we want to go back to, one is what it is, I mean, the clerk was just talking about that.
Still one now, but.
Still one, but we just didn't put the timer on tonight.
Then a uh, another thing is, in reference to the uh boards and commissions, there may be a suggestion in having the chairs to have this uh list we have too. And they can ask their membership, if they're willing, because there was so much confusion tonight, if you want to be reappointed. And they can send that, or they can say, you know, your term is up. You know, you need to contact someone about it. So we can address that to the chairs of each of these commissions to do that for us. Because there's a lot of stuff here that we seem to want to do, you know, and we're not necessarily equipped to be the lawyers and the engineers and the whatever. So we need assistance from those people running those commissions to maybe intercede and say, this person needs to be, you know, by their own hand, and there won't be any confusion like today. Okay, and uh, so far, that was, that was the suggestion I had. Now I have a, I have a concern, so I'm going to express that. Um, rules are only effective if assiduously followed by all. For what is civilized society except a group of individuals who have agreed to abide by a set of laws, rules, and standards designed to achieve a cohesive, productive, and mutually beneficial existence? When you don't follow those rules or you step outside those rules, there are consequences. So without this cooperation and understanding, we have chaos. And I believe Inkster is in a state of chaos, marked by the loss of ninety percent of our historical and institutional knowledge through the attrition of seasoned employees who work for the city for years, earning the same salaries that this administration now claims is too inadequate to hire other qualified personnel. We have lost the clerk, Felicia Rutledge, the deputy clerk, Lillanda Holmes. We've lost two treasurers, Darren Carrington and VJ, never been able to pronounce his last name. We've lost four human resource directors, Gina Clark, Deja Rose, Fanny Craft, and Pamela Crawford. We've lost five planners, Adriana Jordan, Caitlin Hines, and three McKenna employees, Chris Madigan, Ashley Sepeda, and uh Jan Dixon. We've lost uh front office personnel and bill payment personnel, Rhonda Glover and Craig Peterson. Now what can account for such an astounding mass exodus? There is just one common denominator, and that is the leadership. This administration does not seek excellence in employment, it seeks obedience, and those who fail to obey are retired. The most recent egregious display of autocracy by leadership is to assert a line of succession in appointing a police chief. There is no such action imagined or implied in this city government. The job of a police offer is a officer is a civil service position and covered in the charter, which states, entry into this classified service shell as nearly as conditions of good administration warrant be by open competitive examination. That's section sixteen four of the Inkster City Charter, if you'd like to read it. So, this autocratic dictatorial state uh style of governance leaves no room for competent service or dissenting professional discourse. The total lack of transparency leaves council at a disadvantage in implementing solutions and situations presented to them at the eleventh hour, or we're never advised. And also the poli- the repeated violations of the city charter, the total disregard of the city council and the failure to follow the dictates of this society via ordinance and city charter. All of this contributes to the chaotic state that Inkster is in. There is a mechanism to stop this freefall, but those empowered to do so refuse to utilize it. Four votes of council can reverse any arbitrary decision made by the mayor, but they refuse. I am often asked, can he do that, meaning the mayor? The question is, never can a person do something. The question should be, can you stop him? And if the answer is no, then yeah, he can do it. No one stopped Genghis Khan or Attila the Hun or Adolf Hitler or Idi Amin or Donald Trump. And we know, and we all know the results of the indelible scars left on the world by these so-called leaders. When I first took office, I advised that I do not mind leading the charge, but to lead a charge, I need an army. And I am calling on the Inkster Residential Army to now join forces and prevent any further deterioration of this community. I am pleading with those who are aware of what is occurring to join in the battle for Inkster's survival. And for those who do not know what's going on, to inquire, to find out. Do not sit by and do nothing expecting the situation will solve itself. For what does it take for evil to prosper? For good men to do nothing? That's it, Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Washington?
All right, um, so I'll, um, kind of piggyback off this, but, um. I think that we don't actually receive our money from the government in some cases. So little part of that, a lot of the cash, a lot of the time, as we. Be able to do a project to pay themselves for the speed bump. And I'm advocating for them, um, cause they're, they didn't do anything on it and they've been having a lot of issues on, um. Government and little part of that area, so what is the plan, because in twenty twenty three, that's a long time. Um, and I guess this question will be for our director of. Mr. Business. Okay. Um, and then also, just want to, um, address some information, that Gina, uh, already shared, the Michigan Ownership Assistance Fund. But I also would like to add that it's gonna be twenty five thousand dollars grant per household. And then also went to share about the home heating credit, um, that is a low income deaf, disabled, blind person battered, disabled citizens. Um, who qualify for home heating and don't actually, uh, do not require probably income tax to receive that credit, so a hundred ninety three dollars per claim. Um, and that's all I have for it.
All right. I'm ready to be your first moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When we were discussing amendments on our agenda. Um, it's very important, I know for years, we got our agenda on Wednesday night. Some things have been happening and we have not been getting them on time. But it's, it's very important when we do get them. That we read the minutes and stuff, so that way, we do have any discrepancies, we can contact the clerk, she can have them done. And on our desk when we get to council on Monday. Um, because I don't think it's fair to things get misstep when we just start talking. So that used to be. The, the protocol is when you get your agenda on Wednesday or Thursday, you go through it, look through it, if you have any poor questions, you can notify administration. Or anybody, that's why we got them as early as we got them, so we can ask questions upfront and then that when it comes to the meeting, bam, bam, we already got them. Um, other than that, um, I just wanna know, what is your protocol as far as trash cans being sent out? I know I went to my neighborhood the other day and we have a lot of trash cans that's standing out. That I made it with and I'm not, I'm not quite sure, it's probably all over.
We do have orders for that.
Yes, I was wondering what is the protocol up there, so we can kind of get there.
So you're giving tickets, you're giving tickets.
I mean, I didn't give you that, I'm not sure, is, are we have, are we, are we giving, giving tickets for that?
I don't know a lot about that, we are giving tickets for that at the same time, you know, it's. A trash day that was missed, like for, for instance, on Andover Court, the trash for some odd reason was being missed for the last couple of weeks. They had set their trash out and their cans were still out, you know, so if you're noticing that where people are, their trash is not getting picked up, then you let us know.
Okay.
But if they're not, if their trash is getting picked up and it's just sitting out there.
The trash, it looks like in my neighborhood, the trash is being picked up and, but the trash bins are standing. But I just rolled through it a couple of days ago and I tell you, it was, it was crazy.
Yeah, just shoot me an email or just talk directly to Don Ward, which is our code for some officer.
Okay, okay. I just wanna know, do we have something in place where?
Yes, ma'am, we have an ordinance that dictates that.
Okay.
Trash cans, if you could, please, can be set out and it should be, please, for the record.
The ordinance says that you can put your trash out six P M. the night before, the six P M. The day of your trash, after that, you're in violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
Your trash has to be off, your can has to be off the street.
Okay, cause I've been seeing, I've just been noticing, I mean, in one, in one district, it may be Sandra's district, where the cash, the trash cans been sitting up there every day, every day, every day. So I'm just notifying, you know, letting you know, letting the public know that, you know, we do have an ordinance on file and. After six P M., you know, or the next day, you know, cause some people work late and don't get home till late, now that's, that's understandable.
Right.
But after Wednesday or Thursday, there should be no trash cans in a district that's being picked up, you know what I'm saying? Okay, all right, well, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, all right, and just to be clear, um, as it relates to Pastor Gene Overman and Op- Operation Refuge, the. Black History Oratorical Speech Competition and Living Museum presented by Operation Refuge will be postponed. However, they are looking for more students to submit to the organization as it relates to their speech because it's cash prizes for black history speech. So, of course, our kids, I know that I used to be in black history speech all the time, so hopefully you're encouraging your kids, let's jump onto their website, uh, Operation Refuge, I believe it's OperationRefuge.org, I'm not for sure. Com or org, however, that information is there, we'll post that information as well on our website and on our social media platforms. All right, if all minds are satisfied, motion for German? There's support? Would probably support, all the people say aye?
Aye.
You got one, no, all right.
I wanna stay all night.
Some people wanna stay all night. I'd like to see.